So I think the context of the land in general will in itself to a way that this can make sense if given appropriate controls and conditions.
Okay, site plan review standards, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on standards A through F? Any thoughts on that? I would move then that we accept the standards and we'll go through, let's go through A through F as one vote. Sue, would you please do the roll?
Commissioner Legwilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrauben?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Special land use review standards, Andy?
Alright, so the second set of standards that we walked through is the with all special land uses aside from a site plan review standard or the special land use standards is applied to all special land uses and so they're written in general terms. And they're intended to impose a little bit of a higher, you know, a higher bar to approval than you would have with a site plan review. So the first standard is that the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or canon character of the general vicinity such as much change the essential character of the area which it proposed. So I think, you know, with a number of the conditions and with the landscaping and the fencing that the applicant has proposed for the site and with the fact that this has been a, you know, mostly industrial property for quite some time, that this standard is met and if there are any other conditions to kind of further, you know, galvanize that, that would be an appropriate thing to add to your list of conditions of approval if you're inclined to approve it. Can I go through all these at the same time as well?
Uh, yes, throughout.
So B, this proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the city of Ole Missu Park and we talked about that a little bit already. C, the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police, fire, et cetera. You know, we're not sure too much about water and sewer on the site. They're in the area obviously, so, you know, that's, I think those are certainly available as are all other public services. Marty, you mentioned wanting to include an oil separator on there for stormwater, if that's something the commission wants to add as a condition of approval, I think we can, you know, this would kind of give you that concern if you're worried about, you know, services and how this is going to connect to the impact that it might have on public utilities and wastewater utility, or, I'm sorry, in the storm, stormwater facilities.
My only concern is keeping the rivers clean. I mean, we've got a river within 200 feet of where the building is. Our ops run off, happens daily, but I'd like to see it contained a little bit. I know it's not a costly little project, but in the end, it makes the environment a lot safer, I think.
Item, I see, item D, the proposed special land use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. I don't think it'll do that. General speaking, this is a fairly small operation, doesn't require a lot of, you know, upfront public subsidies or investments on the city's behalf. E, the proposed special land use shall not involve uses of activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to persons' property with a general welfare by excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, cluttered orders. Obviously, there is some production of traffic and noise and so forth is certainly possible on the site given use. I don't know that they would be excessive and, you know, if the applicant complies with the, with the conditions that you discussed as far as ours operation and site lighting and things like that are concerned, I think the standard would be met as well. Item F, the proposed special land use shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements and topics of all permits shall be submitted to the city. And that would be addressed again if the commission is inclined to approve it, that is a condition of approval we have on virtually everything.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, any questions on the special land use review standards?
Oh, just one thing, noise. I'd like to see something in here about after-hours idling of trucks. I see it more and more and more in communities where I go into, where they limit at a certain time of night, you can't idle a truck anymore, just like the garbage pickup. Ask to be done at a certain time, can't be done before or so.
Chris, again, after nine o'clock, you're pulling a vehicle in, you drop it off into the building. Obviously, you, I assume you would leave your truck running while you drop it off, but then you leave, the truck leaves immediately, is that correct?
Yeah, we're dropping it off, either going to another show or going home, we don't want to stick around there.
Okay, so does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'd just like to see something, maybe just not gonna, if you get, if it's cold night, just for the noise aspect.
Yeah, what I'm thinking that if the truck is inside the building...
What if it's not?
It's quite a sort of, it's quite a lot of the choir room.
Yeah, yeah.
It's situational. I never say it.
It was not, it was on Washington Street.
Say that again, Chris.
If it's, uh, in the lane, we have to get paperwork or something, it's in the middle of the winter and it was idling, we have it over on Washington Street now around some kind of houses.
Okay.
And it would be over hours on end, it would be ten minutes longer to have paperwork and drop it off, so I just have the most two minutes at that. I don't like my truck staying there idling, that's a waste of fuel.
Right. Is that okay, Marty?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Any other, besides the oil separating, is that what it's called, separator?
Yeah, it just takes, it basically looks like a big box, concrete brings water in, the weight filters out, it basically doesn't allow oils or foreign materials to
Go back out.
To go back out. And it just looks like a big concrete sub tank.
So adding that as a condition, I would assume, that's how we would handle that.
Yeah.
And having said that, special land use review standards A through F, I'll make the motion that we accept those. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
And Sue, our discussion? You're in now, Sue, voice hold please.
Commissioner Legwilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrauben?
Yeah.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
And Chair Barker, on the standards for the site plan review, did we get a second? I know you made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Remember if there was a second or not.
Good catch, good catch, probably not. Vehicle towing service standards, Andy?
So the last set of requirements here, so these are standards that pertain specifically to vehicle towing services when processed as a special land use. These are found in section seventeen oh four, subsection CC of the zoning ordinance. And there are about eight of them. So this last section here, we've talked about most of these already, so this should go fairly quickly. The first one says that building structures and parking areas shall be arranged to allow maneuvering of trucks entirely on the site. So basically, this does not want tow trucks having to pack into the street or, you know, pull out into the street or do any of that stuff and then maneuvering around with vehicles. Given location of the buildings and driveways, I don't have a concern about that. B, a towing service shall not engage in salvage operations, sale of parts of, sale of parts or dismantling of motor vehicles. That has not been proposed here, and we would include that as a condition of approval. C, towing service shall not engage in motor vehicle repair activities unless it is also approved as a vehicle repair facility, so that's what we talked about earlier. So for now, that would not be permitted until that was, you know, subsequently addressed by the planning commission. That's not to say that it couldn't, you know, you couldn't ask for, you know, to kind of add that on, but at this point, it would not be. Item D, vehicle stowed at a vehicle towing service shall be kept within enclosed building or structure or outdoors in a secure fenced-in area screened from view with appropriate approved landscaping and that sort of outdoors for more than thirty days.
Chris, do you have a average storage time for these vehicles?
Most of them are going to be anywhere from five to ten days.
Okay.
In vehicles, we have to keep those for thirty days and then dispose of them.
Okay, thank you.
Item E, services for maneuvering and storage of motor vehicles shall be given that over concrete and created to conduct stormwater, including collection system approved by the city. So this is, I think, where, you know, your oil separator comes in, so they'll need to, you know, draw up plans for paving and, you know, grading so that we know that, you know, it's kind of flow the right way and go into a, you know, catch basin and figure out oil separator before being disposed of. Motor vehicle stored on a towing service shall be stored within or upon containment equipment intended to capture and flush, which may leak from any motor vehicle. So this has been addressed, I think, already. G, toxic, hazardous or toxic waste accumulated on a vehicle service site shall be stored and disposed of in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. No hazardous or toxic substances shall be discharged into the public sanitary sewer or stormwater systems, orange and brown water or surface water. The applicant has not talked about that specifically, although we can certainly include that as a condition of approval. And I think, you know, again, that's largely been addressed. And last one, any outdoor storage areas shall be illuminated and comply with the standards of four point two four, so I'm mistaken, I did not attach this standard. There is some lighting required for the outdoor area apparently, so certainly, lighting hasn't been shown on the site plan. I think it's in everyone's interest here to have it minimally lighted, so, you know, we can work with the applicant to figure out what's kind of the lowest impact lighting that we can find that would satisfy the standard. Then, you know, obviously protect the neighbors and, you know, serve the applicants and the city's interest as well.
I'd almost think a couple wall pack lights down facing would give me enough illumination out there without being too bright. Yeah, I'd like if you guys work with them, just give, you know, give the best lighting, what they need, if they don't need it, and they don't need it, apparently, if they do, so.
Commissioners, any thoughts on the special vehicle towing service standards? Then I would propose that we accept the vehicle towing service standards A through H with all of the various special conditions that we've implied over the course of this. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Sue, voice hold please.
Commissioner Legwilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrauben?
Yeah.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Brian, you had a question, I think?
Yeah, and first of all, I do appreciate everyone listening to my concerns and taking those into account as we make decisions. And I look forward to hopefully being able to work with Chris through this process to make it as limited of an impact on neighborhood. I guess my closing thing is, I do think you want to change in the nature of neighborhood. I know there are industrial businesses there today, but they're primarily eight to five. Rick and Electric isn't making noises after five o'clock at night. The lot where they clean the trucks over from King's Milling after five o'clock isn't going on. If anything, the neighborhood's moving in the opposite direction with the addition of a new restaurant there, addition of a whole bunch of apartments into the area. So I understand as far as the master plans that it is listed that way, but you do know essentially what you're doing is putting a business that's going to have longer operating hours amongst houses. And so again, I appreciate what you've done to try and mitigate the impact of the business on that area. I do hope that Chris will be a great neighbor and that he'll work in that context, but I do have concerns. I hope I've proven wrong six months after this, but thank you for taking my thoughts and consideration today.
Thank you, thanks for bringing them. Okay, Andy, recommendations?
Yep, so if you're inclined to approve it, we have proposed a number of conditions and I've been working on a list here modifying this as we've been talking. So my list of conditions is up to twenty-one, and so we'll kind of walk through these. And we'll kind of go in pieces, so the first four conditions are virtually the same conditions we put on everything, so, you know, permit fees, application fees, comply with any requirements of the engineer, fire department, et cetera, obtain all their permits. Number five, I would like to call your attention to specifically, so the special land use shall not become effective until a zoning ordinance text amendment to permit towing services and light industrial becomes effective, so you just recommended that. That's got to go to council, council would have to approve it, publish it in the paper, you wait a week and then it becomes effective. So there's a few weeks before this property could be used as a towing service, I would have to, you know, patent first. Item number six talks about the items missing from the site plan, the only built that I have from the planning commission as far as site plan additions would be locations of wall pack lights and the location of the dumpster. Is that correct? Is there anything you'd add? Seven was about signage. Number eight about landscaping, so I think we can take that one out for now because we have landscaping shown on the site plan.
We talked about the privacy fence too.
Yep, so we have I don't have any order of fence in here, so we'll say, so we'll require, I'm not sure on if the zoning ordinance allows for eight-foot fence. It might, but a lot of them top out at six feet, just so you know, you can certainly require a privacy fence, not sure if you can require an eight-foot tall privacy fence.
I read somewhere in these things, it says six to eight foot.
Yeah. I did too.
I forget where I'm looking.
I will check into that, so if the ordinance permits an eight-foot fence, then we'll go with that, we'll just say that the tallest fence permitted by the ordinance perhaps?
Sure.
Then the R, like you, will be planted as shown on the site plan.
Seven, seven foot from lot line on the north side?
Yep, so on condition number nine, we got no parking within twenty-five feet to any rear lot line. Then the paved area shall also be set back to be seven feet from the north of the lot line. Number ten, about maintenance of landscaping has not changed. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, these are all the specifics conditions for towing services, those are all the same. The paving requirement is at item fourteen. The containment next for fluids is at number fifteen. Hazards of toxic wastes is addressed in condition sixteen. Outdoor storage area shall be illuminated is at number seventeen. And then I have number eighteen. No strobe, siren, or flashing lights during nighttime hours, regular hours of operation shall be seven AM to nine PM. Towing services outside of these hours must enter off Washington Street and keep services inside the building insofar as practical to minimize the impacts on the neighborhood. Number nineteen, I had the parking lot shall not be lit, we got to take that one out. Number nineteen, oil separator shall be installed with the stormwater infrastructure. And number twenty, idling trucks shall not be permitted other than what is minimally required to conduct the business.
Say number twenty again, please.
Idling trucks shall not be permitted other than what is minimally required to conduct the business. Did your words fit that a little bit? I think they fit a little bit.
And having said that, commissioners, any thoughts, anything else?
Number eighteen, you said, can you repeat number eighteen?
No strobe, siren, or flashing lights during nighttime hours, regular hours of operation shall be seven AM to nine PM. Towing services outside of those hours must enter off Washington Street and keep services inside the building insofar as practical to minimize the impacts on the neighborhood.
Nineteen hours is when it's dark, obviously.
Yeah, well, yeah, so maybe we just say towing service, so, yeah, so we can maybe modify nighttime hours to say, you know, after sunset or something.
After sunset, that's better. I was thinking nineteen hours versus nineteen hours.
Say after sunset or before sunrise, how was that? Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Having said that, then I'll make a motion that we approve the special land use application for two eleven South Washington with the following twenty conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
And discussion? Sue, voice hold please.
Commissioner Legwilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrauben?
Yeah.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
So the special land use application for two thousand and eleven South Washington is approved. And Chris, I know Andy will be in touch, or you'll be in touch with Andy on some of these points as well as the, whatever you need to do going forward with the planning commission, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next item of business is a public hearing for a site plan review, special land use, twelve fifty West Main Street, adult-use marijuana establishment. And is Brian Toma on board? Where is Brian here?
Uh, this is Chris, this is European, I work with Brian, the operations of the team, we also have Sage here.
Chris and who?
Sage.
And we probably should have your last names, Chris and Faith.
My last name is European, Y P R, I'm I P. But you mean this is Sage Audible, last name A R A B O, I have the designer for Mr. Toma and for Chris, you have to answer any questions from a design perspective.
Thank you. Sue, you got, you got those?
Yes.
Our normal take is that, and I'll open the public hearing for this right now, but our normal take is that we hear from the applicant to just in their own words to give us three, four, or five minutes of what you want to do, basically.
Uh, do you want me to speed up, I need to be out here?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, um, all we do is plan on remodeling the property and, okay, I'll put marijuana establishment at that location. Measure the timeline for a possible grow and processing there as well, that the site definitely has the space for it. We like that site, it has a ton of parking, and if we don't want to have, you know, that's one thing at our busy locations, we anticipate this to be a busy location, this parking is always an issue. And so you probably see some other dispensaries, but they're on smaller lots, this lot is definitely more of an advantage to not cause, you know, problems in parking lots or whatnot.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be referring back to you as we go through this, our general policy is to have our Williams and Works person here to explain what you're doing and how we're going about doing this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on Main Street, like all the other ones, specifically at twelve fifty West Main. It is about five point one acres, is zoned C three, general business, and this is a little bit larger lot than we typically deal with in this district. It extends from Main Street all the way down to both roads, so it has frontage on both. So what's being proposed here is, you know, the front, twenty-one hundred and sixty-six feet of the existing building will be adult-use marijuana establishment, specifically if we are re-tailored. And then according to the site plan, there's another eleven thousand square feet or so that appears it would remain unused at this time. There are a number of items as far as the site plan is concerned that are not there. So on the second page of our report, we have a list of items missing from the site plan, and that's kind of a general note. And I know it's a large, kind of unusually shaped property, so it's hard to fit it all on the screen, but the site plan that's shown on sheet LS one is a little misleading unless you know what you're looking for because it doesn't dimensionally show the property in the way that it's actually shaped, it's kind of, you know, squished, it kind of smashes, you know, the southern half of that is kind of exaggerated and it's smaller than it actually looks. And that's something just to be aware of, so, like I said, there are a number of items missing from the site plan, the date, location, schedule, legal description, the size of the subject property, the property lines, and, you know, those portions of the site used by the applicant and those also used by others. All existing and proposed structures on the property, per pre-aid payment with size and location of utilities, surface water drainage facilities, contours. A bunch of those things we probably don't need, right? So I'm not that concerned if they tell us what the size of the subject property is because we already know that it's five point one acres, that's the least thing to figure out. So some of the other details I hear that help, I think, give the planning commission a little bit clearer picture of what you're dealing with would be helpful. You know, specifically, the whole southern half of the site is presently is pretty much a baseball field right now, and so, you know, that's not illustrated on the site plan and perhaps it's not relevant to what they want to do with the property, but it might, you know, limit the picture that you have as a planning commission of what's going on here, and so you might have a bunch of questions for the applicant, so feel free to ask those. And then additionally, with regard to the specific requirements for marijuana establishments, there are a handful of items not shown there as well. The verification statement, the consent statement from the property owner, the lighting plan, window calculations, and then there were a couple of items in the security plan, which we won't get into much detail on due to their confidentiality, but those also, there were some items missing there as well. As far as the site plan review is concerned, so, kind of like with the previous application, they're proposing to use an existing building, so there's not a lot of new construction, you know, replacement of new buildings on the site going on here. The building needs all the setback requirements, it needs height requirements, it needs a lot area coverage and with requirements. So all of the dimensional stuff is good. Landscaping, there's quite a bit of landscaping required, they have exceeded landscaping requirement by quite a bit. The ordinance requires ten trees and thirty shrubs, and they have got eleven trees and sixty-eight shrubs, so that's pretty dizzy. We're not sure how much work on the parking lot they're going to be doing, if that's going to be resurfacing the entire parking lot, and there may be some additional standards for parking lot line and interior parking lot landscaping that would come into play. So that's something that, you know, as we've worked with the applicant and that's they kind of firm up their plans of what they're going to do with the property, that is something that we'll need to pay attention to. As far as parking is concerned, in terms of quantity, retail uses require one space for each two hundred square feet. And so with only twenty-one hundred and sixty-six square feet, uh, for this particular use, there's only eleven spaces required. They're, they're proposing forty-four, which is obviously way more than they're requiring. Usually that would, um, you know, make us want to have them back off on parking a little bit, but, um, as we've seen with some of the establishments, there's been, you know, quite a bit of parking needed, so I'm okay with what they have proposed at this point. Obviously, some of the space there could be used by other tenants possibly in, in, in the future. But I think longer term, there's probably an opportunity for, uh, joint parking and shared parking arrangements with, um, you know, future, future tenants on the property as well. Um, site plan does show a placement of light poles on, on, on the property, uh, at a maximum height of fifteen feet. Uh, the ordinance has a max of, of twenty, so the, so the height of the light pole is acceptable. Um, the security plan also states that exterior lights would be constantly eliminated at all points of entry and exit and there'll be motion, motion detecting lights and things like that. Obviously, if the, with the, the additional lighting that is often required for these uses, there might be concerns about lighting at, at the property lines. And so if you, if that is a concern of yours, that it may be too bright relative to the neighboring properties, you could request for eight foot meter plan that would show, uh, the lighting level at all the property lines. As far as science is, is concerned, they do have a wall sign showing on the site plan. There's a maximum requirement, typically it's fifty square feet, uh, for, for uses like this, and that's something that we will deal with, that we, that we would deal with if approved after the fact. Um, they'll have to submit a separate sign from that and they'll make a delay with the size of the sign at that time. Uh, as far as the state license is concerned, they have submitted an official letter stating they've obtained prequalification status, uh, from the state, and obviously the city would require, um, the, kind of the, the final license once it's obtained from the state of Michigan. And then they also completed a, a license with the city of Lowell, if you recall. Uh, marijuana establishments are required to have a, a, a local license in addition to these special land use permit from the city. So there's kind of a, uh, there's kind of a multi-step process here. So they, they, along with their special land use permit, they apply for a provisional license from the city. And then after they've obtained, uh, their, their, their state license and the special land use permit, they comply with all of the city's requirements. Then the last thing the city does is hand over the final operating license to the applicant. Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we go through the site plan review standards, um, obviously this is a public hearing, so I'm not sure at what point you want to hear from the public. Do you have a letter here, uh, as well that relates to this application?
Um, and Sue, you received this letter from, uh, the slot law group, P L L C. And what was there in town, or where, where are you at with, or can you fill us in, I guess?
He, he just wanted each of you to have a copy of it, and then he just wanted it noted, uh, for the record that each of you received it, but he did not leave me to read it into the record because of its length. He just wanted to make sure that each of you received it from, um, this is from attorney Philip Slatt.
This concerns the church property across the street, correct?
Yes.
The Calvary Christian Reform Church.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, it appears that the main, um, the main, you know, the, the thrust of this letter is that, um, it's their position that the, um, classical conversations of Lowell, which is leased, uh, by the church to this organization, would constitute a school and the, the city's special land use requirements for citing marijuana establishments state that it cannot be within a thousand feet of the school. And so I think, as, as I, and again, I only had, you know, I read, read through this right before the meeting tonight, so I can study this in great detail, but that appears to be their primary argument. They make a few other points here as well. But most of the letter seems to be, uh, devoted to the point that this should not be permitted in this location because it's within a thousand feet of the school, therefore would not be consistent with, consistent with these own ordinance.
Susie, has, has Mike seen this?
No, I just got this late this afternoon.
Okay. Because I would like city manager and possibly Jessica, our city attorney.
Absolutely.
To take a look at this before we, um...
And, and have Andy give us a, a reading on it as well.
Correct.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I'm not sure that, uh, we wanna go through all the site plan review standards until that is...
Correct.
adjudicated at this point. And, uh, there is a number of things missing on the site plan anyway, which also should be, uh, looked at before the, our, our next meeting. Is, uh, the rest of the commission okay with that?
Yeah. Because I know we talked about when we started doing all this, that, uh, we couldn't just all of a sudden put a school and try to stop it.
That'd be existing.
Yes. So I just want Jessica to take a look at this, or city attorney, or the city manager to take a look.
Right, because of home school qualifying and all those kinds of things.
And when was it established?
Correct.
See, all the, you know, uh, just work it out and, and we can come back and...
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Andy, do you have anything to add, uh, to the applicant that, besides the, uh, things missing on the site plan and obviously, uh, Sue, did the applicant, uh, get this letter as well?
Not that I, not that I'm aware of, no.
I would've...
No, this attorney just emailed it to me later in the afternoon.
Okay. Andy, do you have any thoughts on that, whether or not we should get it, or...
It's public information, so if they want to, they could have a copy of it. I mean, it's not, once it comes into city politics.
I guess...
So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not familiar with, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with, with Calvary Christian Church. I'm not familiar with the classical conversations of Lowell, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
Right. I don't think any of it's...
Yeah, certainly it's, we can work with Jessica and do some, I mean, it might be a matter of interpretation, but I think it would be valuable to have some, some...
I'd like Jessica to weigh in.
Yeah, I would too.
So as far as the applicant is concerned, um, you know, objectively, I think a lot of the standards are, are okay. Uh, we, as you read through our report, um, there's only kind of a, a, a couple of, of concerns that, that we had. One of the big ones was that what's going on with the southern half of this property? I mean, it's a, it's a baseball field, so, um, what's, there's, there's a curb threat down there on, on, on Bowes Road. Can that be used for access? Are they gonna divide this property with the plans are for that? I think it would be helpful information. Um, I think a more fully, you know, built out site plan, a more engineered site plan would be helpful. What they've submitted out is, is, is informational, it's helpful, but it's more of a, you know, schematic almost. And if there's a fully, you know, engineered and detailed plan, probably don't be, um, you know, contours and some of those really specific things since we're not doing grading and stuff, but I do think a more, a more complete site plan would be helpful.
Also the interaction within the larger building as far as heating goes and odor and all of those kinds of things. We, uh, we just went through that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and certainly this would be the same, same scenario.
Yep.
So I, I, I would include that thought in there.
Yeah, so I mean, if, yeah, if the building is being reserved for future tenants to occupy another part of it, then you're right, those same issues. Now, this would be a retailer and not a microbusiness, so there's a difference there, I think. Um, because you're not growing there, you know, it's processing and stuff, like you would be doing at a microbusiness. The retailers probably, um, you know, less impactful in terms of odor potential and things like that. But you're right, I mean, if, if that's, if that's the plan, then you could certainly, you know, request a more detailed...
And maybe that's in the security plan, I don't know.
Um, no, there were some items that I can, I can, you know, speak with the applicant after the meeting about some of the security plan things. There was a couple of relatively minor issues, but things that should be...
But I think we need to address that issue of, of odor escaping into the other part of the building and all of those kinds of things, even if it's a retail establishment, it doesn't matter.
Correct.
We've gone through that. I, I would make the recommendation on, um...
I do have a couple of other letters, if you'd like me to read those into the record.
Um, sure, are they long, short, or...
No, they're, they're fairly short.
Okay, let's read them and then, um, I, my, my thought pattern here is that we should pass on this slot law group and all the letters to the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
This letter was addressed to the city manager and the council members, and I did call her today and confirm that she, she meant to address it to the planning commissioners. I've heard a rumor that another drug house may be opening on Fulton Street across from Calvary Christian Reform Church. I'm ready to request your action in rescinding this movement. I am a charter member, sixty-one years of Calvary Church. Each Monday, the church has leased to one hundred homeschooled children with grades from grades K through twelve. Please do not let this drug facility influence them right across the street. I suppose drug business is booming in Lowell, but aren't there other places available? I'm embarrassed that members of Porter House Village, where I now live, are saying that I love, are saying that I love and come from a drug town of Michigan. Thank you for your consideration, this is Janet J. Berry, thirty-six oh two Fulton Street. This one is addressed to the Lowell city commissioners. I am a resident of Lowell, I love living here, it is a great little city. We have so many wonderful aspects to Lowell that attracts others to our wonderful little city. I am writing to you regarding the proposed adult use marijuana establishment at twelve fifty West Main Street. We have several marijuana shops and growing facilities. I know of seven facilities already. We do not need another one. Please stop encouraging and allowing more and more of these marijuana facilities. I will not vote for any of you again who are currently a commissioner. I have no faith that you are doing what is best for my little city of Lowell. Most adamantly, Heather Sullivan. She resides at thirteen three seventy Forest River Drive. That's it.
Any other comment? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come on up and, uh, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Doug O'Martin, and I live at one twenty-one five Oak Island, just outside of town. And I'm here for the first time so to give me, if I, if I'm not phrasing it all correctly, like...
Can I please have you step to the microphone?
No.
It's gonna be really hard to pick you up here.
Thank you. Don't worry about it. Yeah.
Um...
We're pretty relaxed.
I'm here also, I, I, uh, I kinda wanna just go on record about the, the numerous campus facilities in our little town of Lowell. We've been here twenty-five years, have six children, raised them here, and the topography of, of businesses has changed our little community. I'm not opposed to businesses starting, but having all, all these types of businesses in this, this large number of them. Uh, our youngest, I'll give you an example of how it's affecting our family. We own two businesses, one in Catonia and one in Sparta. And the young people that work for us, I recently said Lowell will be a great town to move to when you're all grown up, and the first thing out of their mouth was, well, that's a pop city and my parents would never support it. Our daughter, who is twenty-six and has three children and moved to Lafayette, Indiana, would love to come back, but she said I would never come back to that town, mom, because I wouldn't wanna raise my kids there. And I would just like to be on record that we were once known and, and people aspired for the pink arrow game in the community and walking down the street, and now it's a different climate, it's defining us. And I want to put that out there just to appeal, I guess, whether or not anything. And apologize that I've been kind of asleep at the wheel, not watching it happen, until I drive now to work and I see every doggone billboard all the way to Catonia is just advertising the businesses in my little town. I thank you very, very much for the work that you do, and I appreciate this opportunity to just get it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would, I would also recommend that you, uh, go to the city council, and they have, uh, an open period to address things not on their agenda, and I would, I would highly recommend that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Deborah, can I please get your last name again, I'm sorry.
Mark.
Mark, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, please come on up and give us your name and address.
My name is Ryan Lamb. I live at one two nine five Highland Hill, um, here in Lowell. Uh, I'm actually the pastor of Calvary Christian Reform Church, and, um, it was our lawyer who, uh, went ahead and submitted that letter to you. And so we wanna make sure that you have that. But I just at least wanted to say that our concern comes from the kids that are at our building. Uh, we have Sunday School, we have VBS, we have Germans and Cadets, we have many different children's ministries that are at our facility and along with this homeschooling organization that meets in our building as well. And so our concern is for our community, and especially for these children that have such a facility right across the street. Again, I, I like the way you hear, and like many others, I wanna thank you for the work that you do here. I know that it's gotta be difficult work, but thank you.
Thank you for your...
I have a question. You said something with the homeschooling, can you explain that more? There's homeschoolers that go to that church?
Yes, so, starting, I believe it was August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, uh, that should be stated in the letter there, we went ahead and we, uh, uh, started a contract with a homeschooling group that has upwards to about a hundred children that come into our building. We actually have two buildings, uh, there. We have one at one one two five West, West Main, and then also one one five one, which is the sanctuary church building. And they use both buildings. And so they have teachers that come in and they, uh, go ahead and have classrooms off throughout our facility and it's...
It was somebody talking through the door.
Oh, okay, alright. Uh, is that good enough, or...
About, uh, so what is the schedule of them using that facility? Once a month? Once a week?
Once a week.
Once a week, they use the building?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, at this, at this point then, um, I would recommend that we postpone, um, the, uh, application for the site plan review for geriology until, uh, the meeting of April twelfth. And at that point, we'll have, uh, hopefully we'll have the, uh, information that we need to, uh, further look at this, uh, this case. Thinking commission, I, I would, uh, I'll make that motion, I guess, and is there a second?
I'll support.
And Sue, would you give us a voice vote on it, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Stravon.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Um, so we, we will postpone it till April twelfth, and Chris and Faith are...